It is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call this, uh, special town council meeting to order. Did I say eight o'clock? Okay, good. All right, um, we have, uh, Clerk Bush, if you would do the roll call for us, please.
I am.
Present.
Present.
And Councilmember Colbert is on his way, so he will be joining us partway through. If we can stand for the pledge allegiance.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
And we'll just review the agenda. We do need to make a change to the agenda. Because we had no team sign up for our teen hall town halls to be prepared, so we'll try and bring that up again, maybe in the spring. Once, when folks are realizing they need their. So our agenda, um, will remove the teen town hall takeover. That leaves us with the proclamation for Municipal Government Works Month and ordinance twenty twenty five oh eight speed camera fees. Is there any, are there any changes other than that noted to the.
Should we have administrative updates or commissioner updates as this is gonna be our only meeting of the month?
I know staff has some administrative updates. That's not the regular business agenda, so that really should be item six and bump everything. Down. Are there any changes to the business agenda? Okay, hearing none, um, signify, signify your agreement with the agenda and the modification to it by saying aye.
Aye.
So we will get right into business. We are gonna start with the Municipal Government Works Month proclamation. I'm gonna turn it over to our town.
Council, um, November is the time to highlight how municipal government enhances the quality of life of its residents and all Maryland's. So, uh, so each November, uh, we celebrate municipal government. Now, how do we celebrate Municipal Government Works Month? Well, whether it's a volunteer lunch, food drive, or Veterans Day program, uh, we highlight the connection between our town and why and why it signals how municipal government works to support the community. Uh, one of the other things that we do is we proudly display the Municipal Government Works flag, which is right outside of there. And we convey what that flag means, uh, by posting its meaning on social media and making note of it during public meetings, which we are doing tonight. Councilmember Bond isn't here, so I don't like. Councilmember Bond, right? So if you brought your bond and then here tonight, he could probably give me a little more history on the, on the flag than I could. All right, um. One of the other things that we would like to do during, uh, Municipal Government's work month is set up a dating time for an elected official or staff member to visit a local school to discuss the basis of local government or invite students on a guided tour through City Hall. That's what we tried to do tonight with the teen, uh, town hall takeover. I think that we could probably still do it. That's not off the table, but it wouldn't be at a regular meeting. It would, we could just, we could just do a tour through town hall. And also, um, November's the perfect time to shine the light on departments or specific employees that go above and beyond to serve the community. And, um, you know, we've done that this year. If you look at the, um, newsletter that's coming out, uh, we've highlighted some of the great things that staff has been doing, uh, for the town of Upper Marlboro. We also use November and Municipal Government's work month. Really to highlight our mission statement, our services, events, and activities. And again, we've been doing that month long uh, through our so- social media platform, like website, and we plan to also, uh, continue that, um, with the newsletter that's coming out later this month. So we do have a proper note here, which I'm not going to read immediately. But, uh, so this is the proclamation for Municipal Government Works Month. We'll have it on display out here, uh, for the remainder of the month.
I will just say that your municipal government worked for you all year long, so uh, we're just honoring and celebrating it right now. Does anyone else have any comments or questions on this? Is there any public, I don't think there's any public to comment, but I will still say, is there any public comment on this item on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to, um, I said, I think the record has to note that Director Bond and Councilmember Colbert have joined us at seven oh six. And we'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty five oh eight, speed camera fees. I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Bush to read that into the record, and then Chief first, if you could go over that.
All right, I'm reading. And ordinance, council of town of Upper Marlboro. Chapter twenty four, traffic vehicles, article three, speed monitoring system and brake lighting. For the motor twenty four dash fifty seven. Speed monitoring system penalties, use of running to increase amount of. Vehicle, uh, vehicle reported by speed monitoring system, violation of the posted speed limit. And I'll turn it up with Chief.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, we're in the twenty twenty five legislative session, the, you know, assembly enacted House Bill one eighty two, which basically allow, uh, Prince George's County to increase their fines for speed cam accidents based the speed that the violator is going. So the speeds were originally forty dollars, no matter how fast the person was going. Now it's a tiered system where if you're doing twelve to fifteen miles an hour, if over the speed limit, posted speed limit would be forty dollars, sixteen, nineteen miles per hour will be seventy dollars. Twenty to twenty nine miles per hour would be twenty dollars. Thirty to thirty nine miles over will be two hundred and thirty dollars. And anything over forty miles per hour of a posted speed limit will be four hundred and twenty five dollars. So because the town has a speed camera monitoring system, we had to comply with this, so we're asking the board to, you know, look at this and change it so that we can implement the new fine for.
Any questions?
Few things on this. I assume they round because, you know, what happens if someone's going fifteen and a half miles over the speed limit?
It's no half, it's just fifteen or sixteen.
Okay, so it rounds, um, and I don't think this one's necessarily for the chief, but, um, in here it says the above stated penalties are subject to an additional late fee if not paid within thirty days after the issuance of the citation. Do we need to spell out what that late fee is?
I believe this is, so this is the existing legislation that's been through legal, so if we needed to change that, then we would have had to do that by now.
Right, and as we are, says there's in here, it also, uh, it repeals any town ordinances or portion thereof which are inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance. Can you just, you know, spell out which ordinance it is that we are repealing?
That, I believe, is sort of a catchall in case there is something, because everything isn't codified, um, like, and searchable yet, this is still existing to, or maybe it's standard language from the new attorney for everything.
We've, we've had some that have that clause, but also specifically spell out, you know, we know we're repealing these. And then there have been some other ones that just had that general catchall where.
Right, well, we're not repealing anything here. We're just amending. So we don't wanna, we don't wanna take this out, actually, because this isn't a change. We don't wanna take this out because it will undo what was done by this when it was first adopted. Twenty four. Right.
If it, this is another ordinance, or I guess that we're only modifying a section of it, even do that. Only other comment is it'd be nice to have that little key at the bottom that says what the marks mean, so people know that stuff that's where rackets is being removed from text. Yeah, we often have that little footer in here.
Okay. I have a question. How do we, um, so this is PG County period, right? So are they, um, throughout the state of Maryland?
Yes.
Okay, so how are they just, and you may not know, but how are they getting this out to people so they know that the fines have increased?
So it was out, actually, the law wanted to affect October first. So, um, it was on the news, um, Prince George's County pushed it out.
Showing up in my news feed and my.
Yeah, it was.
Showing up everywhere.
Yeah, because a lot of this stemmed from the two ten accidents, you know, where it had so many fatalities, so they wanted to try to increase the fines across the board. So this was a part of that. Oh, push to increase the fines because other jurisdictions, it's similar to this. We, Maryland was the only one that had it at forty. So they wanted to be in line with both other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Back to, uh, the point that Chief made, I started seeing all those new changes back in late, late August, early October, that the fines were going to increase. It was all over, uh, social media uh, that the fines were going to increase.
Well, you'll get a friend to talk.
Chief, you may not know this, or it may have been, uh, shared when they were going through the legislative, uh, session on, this is, this is for being applied to the Maryland state law. But is there any beyond the unpaid citation going to elections actions? Do you know if beyond that, if there's any suspension of driving privileges of anything that turns into more of a of an infraction than just an unpaid or a debt collection?
Yeah, so when you don't pay, they ultimately flag your registration and you can't register your vehicle. Okay, so I guess that, well, now.
That's what they nominate to. We have outstanding.
Yeah, but now, you know, originally you could get two years, but now you can get a one year or two year sticker. So it's just depending on what you try to, you won't be able to give any of any years if you have a flag based on a unpaid citation.
Um, and then from understanding this is a, a, a safety measure because of, you know, how fast people are going, but do you, from a do you know if there was any data presented on if the tiered system increase in fines does anything to reduce the number of speeding incidences, accidents, or anything like that?
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think just it's your number of fatalities and pedestrian struck that they've had throughout the county is one of the reasons why they just decided to do it across this, I would say for the county, you do it across the county, but it's across the state, and Maryland is leading, I think, like, the east coast in traffic pit out, especially the state of Maryland. So I think this was another reason why they wanted to try to hopefully get people to slow down, and also hit them in their pockets, so to speak. I mean, forty dollars, I mean, you could be doing ninety miles an hour, it's only forty.
Right.
So other agencies and jurisdictions, they were, you know, higher than four hundred and twenty five, but that's what they came up with, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um, public comment on this item? If you come up, say your name and the road you live on. We don't have any on online, so if you'd like to comment, please do so now. Seen no public comment. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five oh eight?
Introduce.
Introduce ordinance twenty twenty five oh eight. Is there a second? Would you call the vote for us, Clerk Bush? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We will move on to administrative update. I know that that has several for us, so I'm gonna turn it over to the town.
Well, um, I, well, the one that I do have is, is an administrative update. Like, you know that currently with that several businesses moving downtown, starting to open downtown. We have been asked to help with some of the parking, and one of the things that we want to add to the agenda and, and discuss are what are our options with respect to uh, some public-private partners there, uh, to assist with some of the parking. Uh, because that's definitely, definitely going to be, and, and the issue is if you start to open. Um, the other administrative update I've kind of passing on to the chief is regarding the mall, the Upper Marlboro, is it Mustangs?
Yeah.
And, and their request from the town.
Yeah, Marlboro Mustangs. Hollywood Boys Six U football team has asked for a donation from us. Uh, they're trying to get to the National Youth Football Championship in Naples, Florida. And that'll be December seventh through the thirteenth. So they were asking if the town could possibly, uh, make a donation to their, their cause of trying to get to the championship and hopefully win and represent Upper Marlboro. So.
Do we have budget to do there?
We do have room for, for that. We haven't had, um, come up with a, with an actual number. I, I guess I was on the low side and Chief made fun of me there, but, but, uh.
We have enough to give them between five hundred and a thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, I'm kind of embarrassed. I was below that. It wasn't, I was like two fifty. They laughed me out of the room exactly. Gave me that same look. So definitely, we have, we have.
Seeing them by VJs. I, I gave them some money yesterday. I saw them by VJs. With their shirts on and they're trying to collect money. Uh, I think that's so dangerous.
So the answer is yes, we have.
So you guys will work that out and then let us know how it was funded or.
Well, I mean, we were thinking about, uh, Darna from Public Work, but if Darna, if you have anything to say, please, Speaker, we were gonna just split it between, uh, for, and, and the town clerk's budget as well. So we came up with a thousand, two fifty per, um, so if you're, if you're okay with that, would you?
Everyone's a thousand dollars. It's like five hundred to a thousand, yeah.
Do we need to, like, create a line item to do it? Because we, we, I think we have a donations line item, which is sort of, it can go under there.
Yes. As a part of the budget adjustment and, um, go from there.
Okay, just making sure we're following all the protocols.
I was, I was fine with that as well, and, uh, we have a miscellaneous line item that can take care of that.
To go back briefly to the parking, public-private partnerships, I just wanna make sure we're all sort of understanding what we're talking about, which is, we have the church street agreement, and so this is taking that agreement to other businesses that have parking lots and looking to enter into that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so are there any objections to staff starting to do that, that we can activate more parking downtown?
No, no objection.
I was gonna ask about that.
In, in the past, what we've also done is we've used our lot. It used to be that it was monthly rental, so that way the business owners would park over there to then free up more spaces closer to their business.
I have a question. Is it possible that, uh, that the town can contact, what's that, that building on the corner? The CAD building, I guess it is. It's empty. That whole thing up there is parking. Is there any way we can reach out to them and see if we could, um, that parking? Want some money for it? We can have the, like, some of the business owners, if they wanna park there, they have to pay a monthly fee or something like that, but that whole space is empty, because I went up there the other day and I made a U-turn. There's no cars, never.
Yeah, so we have to talk to the county about it. I think there have been, there, there were public safety people in there, and that's why they didn't want it, but I think conversation now that, right now it's empty, and I don't know when it's getting, it is going to be filled, but we should be able to have, you should be able to reach out to the county and start those conversations. I think even if the sheriff's office is going in there, I think they'd be amenable to the conversations as well, so.
If, if she's still working for the county, Mary Beth McGee at the Parking Authority, used to be someone who would actually return calls quickly.
Thank you.
Administrative updates. All right, I think we can go on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda.
Um, actually, can I? Mr. update?
Sure.
Just wanted to let everyone know that the subregion six listening sessions were last week, and they on their website, they are doing a community vision survey that closes on December third, so um, residents should make sure to do that, to tell them what they would like to see in this area.
And that will be going out on your constant contact and everything. This week I just sent it over to staff.
Did we get that out? I'm sorry. Did, did we get that out?
What constant contact is Thursday? So it's all on all the social media. Though, if you need the link, go to the webpage and you'll find it there.
They're also in the process of doing the subregion five, which is north of us that I get to, because it was a day of election. There's a medical innovation campus plan that they're working on, on Branch Avenue where the medical center is. They're also in the process of updating the master plan of transportation. And probably other ones, oh, in West Bailey, they're also working, which is just to the west of us.
But just, and also just to, to add to that, the subregion six plan, because, uh, we, I think most of us on this council were able to attend that. The subregion six, three focus areas that, uh, Parks and Planning is looking at, and Upper Marlboro, the downtown region, this town is one of those focus areas. So it'd be really nice if we had good representation from members of the, from residents of the town hitting in that survey, uh, to build out what the new, uh, plan amendment would be.
Okay, yeah, we will be kind of pushing residents to take this survey over the next few weeks, just Thanksgiving, and also take another survey for us.
Can I go back one day? You, Councilmember Lott, you was talking about, you said the, the top level of the county administration building was empty?
Yeah, when I went up there the other day.
Yeah, the top level is basically empty, but the in-between, most of the courthouse people park in, in between, because there are not enough parking in the courthouse parking. But I think that the first and the second level of the county administration building is always kind of full, but the top level is always.
Yeah, every time I've ever been there, and I've never seen any cars. So I, it was just a suggestion that maybe we could use that, um, if they would allow.
That's one of the things I think that's in our vision plan, is to work with them.
It's actually been an issue for decades at this point. I mean, if you look at the charter, there's actually like a whole thing about, we're allowed to build a parking garage and raise funds for it.
All right, so next meeting agenda. Um, so our next meeting is going to be not on a Tuesday, it's gonna be a Monday, December eighth. The reason for this is that the new board is required to be sworn in on the second Monday in December. And rather than having two meetings, we're gonna have one meeting. So at five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty, there will be the swearing in of the new board, same as the old board, but we still have to get sworn in, because our terms expire and we start new ones. Uh, and then after that, we will start the meeting. The meeting will begin with a motion to go into closed session. We will go into closed session. When we come out of closed session, the first item on the agenda will be appointment of the mayor and the vice mayor. The other business items on the agenda will be the check signing resolution, our twenty twenty six calendar, uh, not just defense, but like town stuff, the retreats and team building and, um, training that we all need to have, and also it's a good time to review meeting regulations when a new council starts, so that'll be on the agenda. So anything anyone else would like to see on the agenda, or is concerned about having on the agenda?
I think these are fine, really, given of a, one item to add to the twenty twenty six calendar piece. I know one, so, you know, we'll, we'll look at or aim to set, um, an events calendar for the year in addition to the other items, um, that you mentioned, but I think it would also be good to consider what happens in terms of like ad hoc events that come up. There are committees, there are council members who have ideas for events, and so it would be nice if we could kind of set either a policy or an operating procedure, whereas how much time does staff need to, you know, work on getting an event together so that we have an understanding of, you know, something's not gonna pop up just, uh, if I have an idea today, it's not gonna happen on Saturday, but how much time is reasonable to give for staff to be able to, to put a, uh, something that we hadn't considered in December for maybe August of next year?
We have to budget that too, so that's gonna have to be part of that policy.
You'll sort of look at scale, because something, you know, a smaller event that we're doing on our own property takes a lot less time than shutting down Main Street.
Right, exactly. So just the consideration of what kind of an ad hoc event policy would be.
Do we wanna add that to the December meeting, or do you think we can put that in January as they bring us the policy? Do you want them to bring us a policy in December, or do you want them to bring us a policy in, at that first January meeting where we have a work session?
I think January, because it's gonna be a lot. If we gotta come here at five thirty, it's gonna be a lot. And then if you have friends and family here or whatever, you know, it's just, you know, we wanna keep the meeting as short as possible, because we still have to uh, meet amongst ourselves.
Yeah. Will, will that be your, sorry, will that be our only meeting in December? Yeah.
So we swear in, and then we have our, uh, our first, um, talk.
Swear in, closed session, back in here for these three business items. I, I guess maybe the question is to staff, because, because we, I had sort of more ideas for the agenda, and you were like, we don't have enough turnaround time. Do you have enough turnaround time for this policy, or do you? And we're not even gonna finalize this, this calendar. This, we're just gonna start talking about it. Because we might wanna schedule some stuff in January.
Do I assume that no, I assume no work session in December then?
There's no work session.
There was only one meeting in December.
One. I'm not going to meet you on a Christmas, Christmas Eve, I think.
One meeting?
No, I just want to make. Actually, we all agreed, except for Commissioner Urquhart, in last January, we all agreed on the calendar and it included just the one meeting. But I think it was scheduled for the ninth, which, I mean, if we were thinking about it, we would have realized it needed to be the eighth, but we weren't. So we'll do better thinking about that this year.
Maybe it'd be a part of this calendaring as well.
Right, everything that has to happen when town hall is closed, when town hall is open, when we have events, when we have special sessions, when the budget sessions are going to be. All of that, and we won't have everything finalized, but if we can start, start working on that and then in January, it will be in much better shape. Because we may want to have. Training or goals, because our goal setting that we usually do every year, that's usually in January. So we need to figure out when we're going to do that.
Well, that was a part of January as, as well, and I have, um, all of the departments that. Uh, basically have, uh, presentations that we want to give to the council.
In January.
In January, anyway, and, and a lot of that, it, it, it accompanies the budget, the vision plan and. How it's moving forward over the next few years, so.
We just usually have set for the past four years, maybe we've set legislative goals at the beginning before we go into budget season, so that. When we're targeting the budget, we know what we're doing, so.
That'll be good to hear from each department.
Be good, yeah, to have that, so there'll be departmental goals and budget goals, budget goals will be even more exciting. All right, so. Hearing nothing else?
One, one, sorry. I was, um. I don't know if Chief knows, um, but a few residents came to me today. There were five break-ins last night, they were targeting. Honda Civics and Honda Courts. And, and my neighborhood, Marlboro Town, so just let all the residents know, the whole town, just be on alert. Because this happened last year, um, they're, they're trying to get your airbags, so they were targeting Honda Civics and Honda Courts. And all the people that came to me in our neighborhood had Honda Civics and Honda Courts and all their cars were broken into last night. Just to let everyone know in the whole town and just be on alert.
Did they all report them?
I.
They did, okay, Chief is not.
Yeah, I just wanted the whole town to know as a, as a whole to be on alert, I mean, it didn't happen to any part, but they were really targeting Honda Civics and Honda Courts.
Can I ask a question? You can say you don't know the answer. Um, if someone puts, has a club on, does that prevent them from getting the airbag?
It can, because there are different types of clothes, but if it goes across the steering wheel, across the airbag, it makes it more difficult for them to get out. But if they have the one that goes at the bottom of the steering wheel, over the top so that you can't turn it, you can still take the airbag out.
And there's still passenger bags inside airbags.
They mainly take the drivers because they're going to get out.
So they're taking them?
The airbag is two thousand dollars, you still it, you sell it.
Like stealing, stealing headlights when people have the high end ones where it does thousands of dollars damage to your car, you can get a couple hundred bucks for black market.
So.
I'm just saying, we're laughing with that, expensive.
Basically.
This happened around.
Happens, obviously report it, but it may help if you have a club in your house that goes across the steering. We, steering wheel and across the airbag to use that. Any other chips, it's like lock your doors.
Any, any.
Okay.
Is there any other cars they're targeting, are they targeting any?
It was the key of the Honda haze. Originally. This, whatever the trend is, now it's the Hondas, so they'll take a Honda airbag. Any car.
Honda, it's a key part through years, and so. Stealing a Honda, you can use it on more cars than other ones, so they're.
I mean, like, thank you for that.
Actually, speaking of. Thing to be aware of, um, as I was painting my house, I noticed that I had a small hole in my, um. Storm window, which cracked the window behind, and then I actually cracked the whole storm window. Um, right as Alma and Caleb were moving, we noticed that their front window was cracked, and I also noticed a small. BB sized hole in one of the windows of this old stone building, so I don't know, I mean, these might have been from the spring and I just didn't notice it until now. But someone may have a, using it.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? So, is there a second?
I second.
General public comment, okay, well, we'll hold the vote, is there any general public comment?
Oh, the wall, I'm going to link. Uh, two things about that, one, regarding the parking, if you're contacting the county. There's a council member that I heard him talking about the parking lot being. The new building on Water Street, maybe we could discuss. One night of the weekend using that. Where I was to the county. And my second comment has nothing to do with the town, but it does have to do with the county. So excited, I'm just all celebrating that the pit bull fan was released today, I mean, he was, they voted for him. Yeah, so.
Thank you. Um, I do just want to comment because this has come up a couple times with Water Street Lot, that Water Street Lot is public parking, a lot across from seven eleven, public parking all day long, it's cheaper than our on-street parking, I park there. In, instead of on the street, um, so, and it's very close. And I will just say this for the good and order, you, you walk further when you park at Target. And go in and around that whole store than you do if you park in the Water Street Lot and go in and around our whole downtown to get to your store, so. Better than Target downtown Upper Marlboro shopping. Is there any other public comment? All right. Um, would, uh, so there's a motion on the floor, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye? Right, that was everyone, so we'll go post. By six minutes about.